Okay, folks, I will call the meeting to order at 5 o'clock PM. We've heard from Councilor Alfano that he is not going to be able to be with us tonight because he is delayed in travel and we have Councilor Cohn remotely, so Palin, would you introduce yourself?
Hello, Palin Cohn, District 2.
And you're muted. Could you?
There we go.
Yes.
Yeah, Palin Cohn, District 2.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll mention a few things about meeting logistics and remote instructions. Anyone who's appearing remotely, ask you to indicate your first and last name on your screen so that we know who we're talking to. Anyone who wishes to address the council on any matter must be recognized by the chair. And for our usual procedures, we ask you to limit your comments or questions to two minutes and Ms. Prim will assist us with time, I mean, sorry, three minutes. And Ms. Prim will ask you, will help us with the timekeeping. And we would ask you throughout the meeting to keep your comments or questions germane to the topic at hand. The next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We know there is considerable public interest in goings on up at Country Club Road, and so we will take, add that item to the agenda under other business right after the consent agenda. And so we'll take that with with an introduction by the city manager. Questions and discussion among council and questions, comments and discussion from members of the public. With that is, can we consider the agenda approved? Okay, consider the agenda approved. Next item is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And so what happened up at, what's happening up at Country Club Road is on the agenda and we will reserve those comments for that agenda item, but other items, other topics that are not on the agenda, members of the public are invited to address the council for no more than three minutes. Mr. Whitaker.
Am I acknowledged? Stephen Whitaker. The review of the contract with Green Mountain Transit includes their maintenance of the bike path along the transit center, the stairways and the landscaping along the bike path along the building. That might be interpreted to include all the way to the end of the parking lot. But the paid for landscaping was all mowed and left in a pile months ago and still left in a pile. And Confluence Park, abutting that, still hasn't been mowed since last, or the sand and silt removed. North, the sand and silt from around the granite benches or the stairways, none of that has been done since last July flood. So I believe that we are way past due on enforcing the contract with Green Mountain Transit and their obligations. The Parks Department or the contractor for Downstreet, which maintains the landscaping along the lawn and the parking lot, might be the best, most cost effective way to keeping Confluence Park, whether it's called a park or not. Looking less than an abandoned field, you know, abandoned, that needs attention. Secondly, consider we, last time we considered ways to benefit the businesses. An idea that occurred to me that we get a twofer is that we suspend metered parking for the interim and make downtown attractive to businesses because there's no fees for parking. And we shift that revenue to vigorously enforcing the vehicles that have modified mufflers that are rolling coal, intentionally blasting noise and blocking the crosswalks. I've got plenty of photos of vehicles blocking the crosswalks, including trucks. And the trucks using the Jake brakes downtown, it's over 100 decibels and they're have these engaged even when they're trying to speed up going into the next gear. So the cacophony of this noise pollution and toxic, there's some sporty redneck trucks that are blasting out as much black smoke and noise as they can. But those are enforceable things that are in the ordinance that we could generate this probably equivalent revenue to offset any parking losses. There's also staff savings from not enforcing the parking. We were already paying the police and they would, they'll be the ones have to enforce those. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I like the idea of enforcing nuisance behavior by drivers. You know, we don't enforce our motor vehicle ordinances as a as a revenue generation mechanism, but that, that kind of bad behavior, I think if it's observed, we should get on it. Any other member of the public here to speak?
Just for both of them, I'd like to introduce Fire Chief Derek Libby. His first week on the job just started Monday, so his first council meeting, so welcome, chief.
Okay, I think that is it for the consent agenda and we can move on to item number five, the amendment to the, to our purchasing policy. Is that Finance Director will make a couple of quick comments?
Hi, Sarah LaCroy, Finance Director. So I presented you all with an amended purchasing policy for your review and approval. Our current policy was last updated in 2011. The amounts in it are much lower than what we're experiencing at market rates today for making purchases. Along with federal guidelines have changed significantly since 2011 as it relates to uniform guidance and procurement of funds with federal dollars. And a lot of that language that is required now was missing from this policy. One of my goals was to update all of the finance policies. Given that we will have a large influx of federal funds with FEMA and other related grants, it felt prudent to do this now. In addition, you know, we are struggling to provide the best services to our rate payers in, within the confines of our policy. The best example I can give is currently we have the school street. And if they were required to follow all of the sealed bid process as is in here now, we wouldn't have the time to allow for that to happen. So we would have to utilize our current contractor, which would, based on the numbers, you know, we bid out and later to be approved, would run us another $95,000 on this project. So allowing us this flexibility to work within these different thresholds and to solicit bids, not necessarily sealed bids, but bids that we feel are comfortable and adequate and presented to you all will help us go along a way and providing the best services to our community at the best rate possible, making that dollar go a little bit further. I didn't have a lot else to say about it. I'm happy to answer questions. We upped the dollar thresholds quite a bit from the original, but they also were very low in the original, but I think that this covers us in a way that I feel comfortable managing and we aren't at risk for violating our own policy to do what's best for the city.
Thanks, Sarah. Anyone have any questions? Carrie.
Thank you. So thanks for updating it. This is great. We obviously need this. Just a procedural question. Is this appearing on the agenda where it is because we need to change the policy in order to approve things that are on the consent agenda?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And then I have one more question, which is, I noticed that there is stuff in here about the Davis Bacon Act and compliance with that. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to put our responsible employer ordinance in here as well, just to indicate that for construction projects over $200,000 that they will need to comply or that, you know, something equivalent to that in here. I wonder if that makes sense.
Yes, that definitely is something that can be added. I was focusing on the federal guidelines, but you know, if that is the way we move ahead, I absolutely can add that in a similar section to where the Davis Bacon appears.
Our thought of that was that is our local ordinance, Davis Bacon is something that's, you know, controlled, that's not ours, so we should refer it to our policy, but it's our own ordinance, it's our own ordinance, we gotta follow it. Whether it's in our policy or not, we have to do it, but we can add it for sure.
Anybody else? Any members of the public? All right, is there a motion? I'll move the approved purchase policy as presented.
Second.
Sorry, I shouldn't make it so much of a sermon. I would like to amend that motion to include reference to the not purely responsible employer ordinance.
Is there a second? Okay, move the executive. So Carrie.
Oh, I, I just, I don't think we need to come up with the, with the wording right now. I think we can trust the staff to, with the wording in there. I just want it to be referenced in there.
Yeah, I can put a bullet following the one about Davis Bacon that references our responsible employer ordinance and the dollar threshold for that. And then I will, if we all prove this now, I'll put this in your packet next time for signatures.
We had planned to have a conversation about the responsible wage piece, and I would like to have that before this is included in any other ordinances. And it came to us from staff that it, it's something that would be at least be worth looking at and considering. And I think some members of the council really didn't know it was there or were familiar with it. I would rather not see it in this tonight and and be part of a future discussion as we committed to have.
Lauren.
Well, I wonder if we're just referencing the policy, we could still change the policy and then without having to go back and change this. I, I mean, I, hopefully we're not, we wouldn't be considering scrapping the policy altogether, but we might amend it. And so as long, I would just, I think I would support including just a reference to it here that will presumably have some kind of responsible purchasing, whatever, whatever the right phrase of the, of that.
Responsible employer ordinance.
Responsible employer ordinance, but then yeah, if we just leave it kind of just referencing that, then that can be changed and then that can kind of keep this updated without having to keep changing this policy to reflect specifics, if that works.
Does that address your concern, Tim? Does that address your concern?
Not at all.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we are voting first on Councilor Brown's motion to amend the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Do a roll.
And yeah, we're gonna have to do a roll call. Pearl?
Aye.
Cohn?
Aye.
Hini? Brown?
Yes.
Gill?
Yes.
That's four. Okay, we've adopted it. We've amended the motion. We amended it, yes, I correct myself. We amended the motion. Now we are, we have before us the purchasing policy amendment as amended. Are we ready for that vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call again. Pearl?
Aye.
Cohn?
Yes.
Hini?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
Gill?
Yes.
All right, now we have adopted it. Thanks, Sarah. Okay. Next up, we have the consent agenda and by request, we are taking, we are pulling items D, E, F, and G from the consent agenda, leaving items B and C because I understand there are no minutes to to pass.
Yeah.
So were you gonna say something? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is totally exclusively items B and C?
For the consent agenda, items B and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, let's just take up D, E, F, and G individually. Kurt is on. These are mostly Public Works things with the exception of the building, so I'll have him quickly run through these, the Bailey Avenue debris removal contract.
Hi, this is Kurt, my Public Works director. During the flood, we had several trees and a lot of gravel and things accumulated underneath the Bailey Avenue Bridge. And since that and subsequent events, high water, high rain events, we've had trouble at the bridge where you know, the bridge has been in danger of getting damaged due to the high levels, kind of the obstruction underneath the bridge. So this was identified in the July 23 flood as an issue through FEMA. And we went through the procurement requirements, you know, public bid, got several bids for the project and we're recommending to award to the low bidder, Magnum Construction, to move that debris from underneath the bridge. It should be primarily covered by the FEMA funding.
And as far as you know, they're a responsible, credible contractor?
Yes, we had a meeting with them. They've been in business for about five years, they've done similar type work. And we feel they're qualified to do this project.
Okay. Any questions? Why don't we go through all of them and then maybe we can do a motion to approve all, all four? What about item E, the school street curbing and resetting contract? Or curbing resetting contract?
Right, so we put the curb reset in the bid for the school street project as an addendum. The contractor, we only get one bid for school street. And after we opened bids, they indicated they didn't have capacity to actually do that work. So we looked at other options. There are only a few contractors that specifically are specialized in setting curb. So we reached out to those three contractors and got a price that's much more favorable than the original bid at $20 a foot. So there's a cost savings, but also, you know, this was, as Sarah mentioned, one of the reasons for amending the purchasing policy is to allow us to solicit for bids for qualified contractors in order to expedite the work because we don't have a lot of time to do separate sealed state website advertised bids. And so we're recommending of the, to award to the lowest the lowest bid received for that work, which is $20 per foot of remove and reset curb.
Okeydoke. Thank you. Item F? I will get to you, Steve. But I'll, yeah, but I wanna, I'll, I think I'll go through all four of these and then.
Actually, to anticipate the question because Councilmember Hini asked me this and Councilmember Gill asked this as well. This does include both sides of the road, or at least the Bethany Church side down to where the the work headed, was done for District Heat about 10 years ago. So it does include both sides of the, both sidewalks on about half of the Bethany side to where it was done before. So I think that's what you were gonna ask. And it does indeed. Initially, it didn't, and now that's been added.
Damn, you're good. Item F, school street culvert lining.
Okay, sorry, I dropped off there for a second. I'm back. So the, this was attempted to be proposed through change order to the contractor. Again, the price was much higher than we expected. So we again solicited to qualified contractors and recommend to, or the responsive bidder.
Okay, council, any questions about that? And item G, building repair bids for finance and the fire station.
So this one has actually been handled by Chris Lumbras, who was out today with a bad tooth. So I'm gonna try to do my best. We, we could wait if you'd like, but basically this is to do essentially temporary repairs to the city hall and fire station areas that have been, were damaged last year in the flood to bring them back to more functional areas. We, we got really huge wide range of prices, but the, the low bid was very competitive, really understands the work. We're not sure why the range was so high, but we're very comfortable that SR Services can do what it is we need to do and we'd recommend that we go ahead with that.
Okay. Carrie.
Just ask a question about the process for bids. It looks like the request for bids was put out and 24 hours later was the, the due, the due, the deadline? So is that, that normal procedure? Because the, the letters dated August 12th and bids were due August 13th?
No, no, I think that was the letter to us that was, no, the bids were out for two or three weeks, I think at least on these. Yeah, there's a, yeah, no, we wouldn't turn that around that quickly unless it was an emergency. We can get to the exact dates of when that went out. I don't know it off the top of my head. Maybe someone will know it before the meeting's over.
Yeah, Kelly, it looks like you might have that information. Okay. Thanks.
So what, why does it say August 12th on all of the bid documents?
That was the due date.
Lauren.
Just a quick question about the, like, short term repairs for fire station and city hall. Are those FEMA reimbursable or is that awesome? And presumably, nothing is being, we're not investing in any construction that precludes future decisions. It's just getting us kind of operation for now.
That are not complete, that need to be sheet rocked and carpets that need to go back in and things like, you know, things like that, compressors that need to be put in places, so.
Thanks.
All right. Steve.
I'd like to just spend a moment on the school street project. I think that we need to consider, and I've sent all of y'all a memo on this probably two weeks ago, that related to teeing off the district heat while we've got that street open. We had, we tend to have a habit of re-ripping into new work because we didn't think it through, but that potential housing development, dense downtown housing development necessitates that we take, take an opportunity and, and there's further research needed to whether there's a time expiration of two years or something on whether, how long a district heat tee can last. But while we're trying to make the district heat system run in the black, so to speak, or balance the books, we need to take every advantage of every opportunity to bring more customers on. And it would be a shame to have to dig into the brand new paving of school street because we didn't tee off and create an easement, say, across John Russell's land. Potentially pick up the Trinity Church and whatever goes in further behind there. That, now's the time to do that. There's some drainage issues off of the Bethany that need to be addressed, that, that water volume of water and snow melt goes across the top of the walkway and creates ice that creates a real hazard. And in, in light of our short staffed DPW and the time at which they get out there and the time at which people are parking and walking into town from there, that ice is a hazard. So we can either collect that drainage on the south side of the walk and run it directly into the stormwater system while we're doing this, or consider. Anyway, I think I've made the point that we, I'm glad that you're, you're assuring the council that the first half of school street on the south side is gonna get redone. Those curbs need to be eight inches, not 12 or 13 because they block door openings on low vehicles and they scratch up cars and they create a real problem, so.
Steve, when you said it goes, the water runs over the walkway, do you mean the sidewalk on the south side of school, school street?
Both at the east and the west corner of Bethany Church, that walk, that whole parking lot behind Bethany drains to the, right in front of the door. That was the emergency overflow shelter prior years. And people were having to climb over inches of ice to get into the shelter at night. And that, that water is also puddling at the front corner and it could easily be captured there and run under the sidewalk directly into the, so now's the time to do that kind of work and really make this an example of the standard. I even suggested in that memo that we do navigation. A lot of people need to find social security and the bakery and the library and navigation for sight impaired people. It's a great little pilot project for that. I also hope the city is not gonna do the concrete work itself. We, we've had contractors who do really good concrete work around the recent tree plantings and we've got some really bad concrete work out there that we tried to do ourselves, so.
Okay, thanks. Bill, do you or do Kurt know anything about the issues that were just raised?
I defer those to Kurt.
Well, I'll speak to District Heat first. We don't have any commitments to new District Heat customers. And it is quite an undertaking to tap, put a T into District Heat. It's a pretty specialized work. It takes, you know, a special design that we cannot do in-house. And so, you know, that would derail the school street schedule if we're gonna try to do that with no, with no commitment of any new connection. So I guess I would recommend against that. I'm not aware of the drainage that Mr. Whitaker referenced, but I'm certainly look into it and see if there's something we can do to resolve that. And the sidewalk will be contracted out. We will not be performing that with DPW staff.
Thanks, Kurt. Folks, anything else? Are we ready to vote? Is there a motion to approve items D, E, F, and G from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Now that brings us to item seven, other business, which we had decided we're going to devote to a report and discussion of Country Club Road. Start with the city manager.
Charlie. And we have Assistant City Manager and Police Chief, Fire Chief here, who all involved in this. So first of all, recognize what a difficult situation this is for all involved. City has an encampment response policy and that's what we attempted to follow. In this situation, we have not and do not go looking for encampments. We do not seek to move people who are being, who are camping and not bothering anybody. And there are instances of that occurring around the city in different locations regularly. And camping had been occurring at Country Club Road with really no incidents for a period of time this summer, and that was again, tolerated. There is no approved location. Country Club is not an approved campsite. Nor is any place in the city, nor is any place in any other community areas in the state of Vermont. So certainly recognize the issue. People don't have a place to go and there's no place they're allowed to go, which is why we try to be as accommodating as we can. What we have done is respond to behavioral issues. And what happened over the last few weeks is there were behavioral complaints, being stolen, people confronted, presence of someone who probably shouldn't have been there based on record. People feeling, people that have been confronted that were working onsite. And so those are all issues that are addressed in our policy. So we asked Good Samaritan, who's our partner. And this is typically what we do. They reach out, they do some outreach and then they will communicate with these people. Nobody has been forcibly removed. We have not sent the police up to remove anybody. We, people have been asked. Good CM is working with them to try to find another location. And, you know, and this is. And, uh, you know, and this is unfortunately what we've seen is that a few, you know, people come and are doing what they need to do to survive. And then others come and create a situation that is compromising when people driving cars across the public area, you know, that is a public area that's used for a wide variety of public purposes. And, um, so, you know, we try to consider all options, try to be as, as considerate as we can. And, uh, like I said, nobody's been to some, just to address some of the stated concerns I've heard about forcibly evicting, uh, first of all, they're not being evicted. They're, you know, I guess actually more legally trespassing. There's no legal place there, uh, but certainly have been allowed to exist there, um, with good reason, but, uh, we've addressed behaviors. So that's it. Uh, like I said, we're here, we're happy to take questions. We understand people's concern, listen to comments and uh, as I said, we believe we followed the encampment response policy, but we're certainly happy to listen to their points of view and however the council would like to direct us.
Thanks, Bill. Did you want to have the other department?
Only if you'd like to hear from them, they may respond to specific questions and comments as they come along.
Okay, thanks. So first ask members of council if they have any questions or thoughts at this point, and then we'll open it up to comments and questions from the public. Okay, um, I'll open it up to questions from the public. It's actually, uh, always gratifying when something we're doing has, uh, brings out a large number of people because we are uh, your government and your representatives. And I'll just, uh, for those who arrived late, our policy is that we ask you to keep your, uh, comments to three minutes and we will have, uh, a timer, uh, tracking, tracking that time. And Steve, I see you're up first.
Yeah, my, I have taken the time to request all the internal correspondence and I've read all of it. Uh, I think the sequence of events here and the almost overreaction, it was the city responding to National Life's, uh, request for an eviction that brought some bad actors up to some bad behavior of individuals up to the Elks Club property. So in effect, we created or exacerbated, uh, housing emergency with a behavior emergency. Uh, the absurdity of y'all having approved, uh, 18-hole disc golf course there on the consent agenda at your most recent meeting, and then to all of a sudden put up signs that this is a sensitive area, just really speaks volumes. You, it can't be both. You can't have, you've got to either revoke the disc golf or you got to call it a sensitive area, but you can't claim the whole Elks Club property is a sensitive area prohibited. The assistant city manager's assertion that this is parkland is false. It's not parkland. The parkland hours do not apply. Uh, in effect, we have an emergency. We have to not design, we need a partner that not only manages the easy building, but we need a partner that manages the entire property to create some emergency housing, uh, in the tens or dozens more than we currently have plans for. The Good Samaritan contract is for up to 20 people. And that's indoors in a congregate shelter, which is not advised by the legislators who are funding this or a pandemic. So we need to talk about individual huts in clusters with electricity, modest amount of electricity, not appliances and maintain order with supervised. You keep all your junk within your hut, you know, and this, this can be managed. It can be heat kept above freezing. It's not going to be cozy. It's not going to be a hotel room. But we need to have ordered the trailers for toilets and showers months ago, and you've been, I've been reminding you about this for a year. And that would, that, that could potentially be a two-year interim solution with funding from both the Housing Conservation Board and Department of Children and Families. But what we most need to do is cultivate the management entity. And I've been speaking to folks, Mary Moulton, uh, Downstreet and others. There, there is potential to pull that uh, expanded management capacity beyond what Good Sam is able and willing to do. Uh, and a much more dignified model with privacy and security and look, that I think I recommend a, a management criteria be that the management entity gets to decide which individuals go in which cluster so that you don't put the loud drunks it coexisting with the people who are trying to get up and go to work.
Thank you. And that's your minute, three minutes. Okay.
Hello there, everyone.
And again, everyone, I'll ask to start by, uh, introducing yourselves.
So I'm Carlton Anderson. Um, I'm, I'm just here to let everyone know I'm still looking for a job, ran for mayor, was on planning commission, realize it's the mini monopoly. Um, don't want to be on that. I, I love Montpelier. There's a lot of solutions. If you look on Front Porch Forum that I put on there, I'm a solutionist. There needs to be some type of soft skill liaison between like the streets and the people within city hall. I just extend my experience, given that I've been home insecure since I was 17. Um, and I make broke look good. I'm currently, uh, couch surfing now, um, but I'm doing other things with Orca and trying to bring, um, the spotlight to Montpelier in a way where we all are individual stars. We just don't know it and we need the pipeline to money and content is king. And so rather than taxing everybody, we all, we might as well just create something for ourselves. But I'm just voicing, this is not something I like to do. So I'm just doing it because the urgency of some type of action needs to occur because there's a lot of, um, you know, this going on. And the action happens on the street. And as I always tell people, if trickle-down economics worked for 40 years, we'd all be swimming in it. So we have to think of trickle-up solutions. And I'm just saying, I'm here swimming wherever I could talk to, you know, the unhoused like myself and then also be in Stowe early morning, talking to a billionaire hiding from Wall Street. It's a very easy conversation because it's not about money. It's just about being conscientious of solutions for human beings. I'm out.
Thanks for coming in.
Hi, um, I am Kaya. I actually go by Cam most of the time. Um, or Eddie, I guess. Um, and I wanted to come up here and say how disgusted and appalled I am about how this city is treating their homeless population. They are not allowed to be anywhere. They're not like, like you cannot say we've allowed them to be places. They are, they are people who live in this town. They are, they are our neighbors. They are our friends and we need to treat them with respect. And the fact that, um, our police force is trying to force these people out of somewhat safe, uh, camping is disgusting and I hate it. And like, I'm only 16 and I come home from, uh, school and I find out that we're doing these things against our neighbors and our friends and people in our community. And I, I can't, I have no words. And we need to fix it and we need to fix it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get that back to follow, but I'm going to try. My name is Rhonda Gable. I run the overflow shelter for Good Samaritan Haven. Um, and I, I just wanted to take a moment to clarify what supports we have provided. And I have a few questions for you, Bill. Um, because I'm a bit unclear about where we go from here. Um, the overflow shelter closed on May 29th and since that time, seven days a week, either Rick DeAngelis or myself or another staff member, sometimes more than once a day, has been at 203 Country Club Road delivering water, providing other supports, occasional food deliveries, but mostly check-ins, water and support. We have, you know, there was an individual staying in that location who had a protracted mental health crisis who we worked diligently with. I've worked with that individual for a number of years through both Good Samaritan and Washington County. I didn't go, I didn't take two vacation days to work to get from my other job, to work to get that individual into the hospital. Like we have addressed every situation that we have been aware of as it arose. So my question is, I think it would be helpful. It would be helpful to me. And I'm not asking for this information here, but I would love to see it. It would be helpful to know, you know, dates, times, names of incidents. Uh, you know, so that we can really, you know, better plan in the future. But also where do we go from here? What is the next step? Like what we have told folks was the message that I received from Rick and Julie, who I report to, which is that if folks do not move, that they will be no trespass. So we moved on Monday, we moved two individuals who are willing to move. Many other folks were unwilling to move. My concern is that on October 1st, we open our doors and we bring people inside. If folks are no, I have a lot of concerns, but for time's sake, I'll limit it to this concern. If folks are no trespass from that site, it will be incredibly difficult to shelter them if they are no trespass. So could you speak please to what the next steps will be if folks choose not to move?
Okay. There's a lot in there, Rhonda, and I'll, I may need some assistance with this, but, um, first of all, you're correct. And just so everyone understands, we, we were aware and, and Good Sam has been providing ongoing support. And I think to your point, when did the, the shelter close? But in May, right?
May 29th.
May 29th. And so from then until now, there has been people camping and the city has, you know, looked the other way, has, has gone along with that. So I want to be clear about that. This is not an anti-camping thing. Um, we did meet with Rick and Julie, I think a week or two ago to go over the specific incidents and, um, and in many cases you had addressed some of them, um, no question about it. Um, so ongoing partnership, uh, we haven't gone so far yet is to, to no trespass anybody or to, to think that far ahead. We're hoping we can work things out between you and them and that things will work out. We're, we're trying to do this as compassionally as we can. I can't imagine a circumstance in which we would request a no trespass order to have it be, uh, effective for someone to use a shelter or building, right? We would revoke it. We would, I don't know what it takes to, yeah, I, I can't, I can't foresee a circumstance that somebody who was camping in a place that wasn't allowed, wouldn't be like, wouldn't be able to go to a shelter where they are allowed. I, I, I don't think that would be an issue. I, I, I wouldn't go along with that. I would make sure that happened personally. I can't, I'm see that that would happen.
That's good to hear. May I just briefly respond? So.
The mayor.
What I had heard after that meeting was that specific incidents and names were not provided to that meeting during that meeting? Did I misunderstand something?
I thought we had all the incidents, but maybe they didn't give them, I, we had the list of all the calls and I think we gave it to them. So if not, we certainly can.
So what should I be telling people who ask me tonight, tomorrow, the next day, who say I am unwilling to move? What should I be telling people? That the city's response will be?
I think you should tell people that we've asked them to move, that they're not authorized to be there. Um, but you and we will try to work with them to find a better location.
People, to be clear, people have been offered other locations. I mean, obviously there isn't another location. There's a sanctioned spot, but people have been informed that there, you know, a number of different areas that we will move them to and they're declining to go.
I don't, I don't know what you tell them then. I don't have an answer for that right now. This is a tough situation. So I, I don't know. I mean, I'd want to talk to our team and see what we want to say.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, Rhonda.
Hi, my name's Tanya. Um, and I have, um, just kind of a comment on, uh, how the whole, how this whole situation was, uh, introduced. Um, I would like to point out, you had mentioned that nobody's being evicted, but they are being displaced. Um, and you know, it's not technically an eviction, but it, it carries with it. Well, they'll be carrying everything they have with them. Um, and after the past year, I can definitely say that it is not easy to relocate your life, no matter how small you make it. Um, my question is, um, I would like to know how we can justify punishing the whole for the actions of a few. As I understand it, for the most part, things have been very chill at that particular encampment until a group of individuals, um, I don't know the, the logistics of it, but as I understand it, um, the problems are recent and I'm wondering why rather than dealing with, um, you know, rather than dealing with, uh, the act illegal actions of an individual on an individual basis, why the entire group needs to move? Um, I appreciate your time.
It's a good question. I think in some cases I kind of look for a lifeline here from our folks, but I think in some cases we're, you know, we don't exactly know the exact individual, but I would rather somebody that knows more of what they're talking about and answer that question. And, you know, we've seen in other circumstances, when there's a smaller group of people and it is fine. And as more and more people come and it becomes an acceptable place to be, it gets larger and it gets harder to manage and becomes dangerous for the people staying there as well as other folks. Uh, and so some of this was, this was starting to go into that situation. Um, you know, we can be reevaluating it as people, as things happen and we can see who's where we want, you know.
May I respond really quickly? I.
Very quickly.
I just want to point out that the situation's already dangerous. Simply being homeless is dangerous. Um, and I would really appreciate it if the city would consider that we need a solution that isn't the woods. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Theora Ross. I live in Montpelier. Um, I want to say that I think after the past year, after so much focus on central Vermonters being displaced from their homes due to natural disasters for us now to use displacement of people as the first response to trouble that we're seeing is irrational and an outsized response. Uh, from what I'm hearing, the people who have been causing trouble are people who were directed there by a caseworker working with MPD. And for the first response to be everyone has to leave seems completely unreasonable and seems like an escalation that is totally unnecessary. Um, I don't think it's acceptable that we continue to displace people. I don't think it's acceptable that we expect people to live constantly on the move. And I don't think that that is a quality of life that we should expect people to experience. I think that people have a right to shelter. And if we're not going to provide them shelter, to, to expect them to constantly move around at our convenience is unacceptable as a community. Why was this the first response?
Um, there's a lot there. I, I don't think they were referred there by police.
They were.
Is that correct?
Eric Nordson from the police department. Um, we have a shared crisis clinician, which we brought in, uh, and what I learned was at one point they brought that clinician was helping, uh, the unhoused get some tents and directing them up that way. As soon as that was resolved, that that was not okay. The, the crux of the matter here is, um, uh, we, we, we're all on the same page. We want housing for people, not in the woods. So like, we're together for that. Okay. So, you know, I don't think we want to, it, to, the conversation is we need to find housing, um, not to be angry at each other because we're all on the same team to find the housing. How, how do we, how do we solve this problem in a room with, you know, 25 people is incredibly challenging, especially with the emotions that are involved. So, so let's just, let's just take a look at how this evolved. Okay? It started out as Country Club Road had a couple of people camping and there's no real issues up there, right? And then it became the acceptable place to camp and the, and the, the, the referred to place to camp by the good Sam, right? So then you have three people to six people to 12 people, now upwards of 15 people. We had some problems that we had to deal with, right? Last night, for instance, we had two people up there, one from Colchester, one from Milton. This is the place where people are being told to go. It took our police staff to go up there and we had to be backed up by Berlin. Montpelier ambulance had to go up. They took him to the hospital. Then the hospital called and Berlin PD had to go back to the hospital. So we're not just dealing with the local folks. It's become the magnet for a lot of different people. So it's really tricky. I think we all want to take. It's become the magnet for a lot of different people. So it's really tricky. I think we all want to take care of our people, but it's become a magnet for people from outside of our area as the go-to place. And a lot of it is because we are such a compassionate community. You know, we have people that will do outreach. We, we, we had waves of people here. What, last month, where we, we send our outreach workers from the Good Sam, who are doing incredible work, right? We sent our Washington County Crisis Clinician, who's doing the best she can. And we're sending mobile crisis out there, link people with resources. But at the end of the day, without housing, we have no place to tell them where to go. And that part is tough. And, and I, I hate to say this stuff, but I'll tell you exactly my feeling. You know, I, I know everybody wants to vilify the police. I was at a local law enforcement leaders meeting with the governor. I interrupted the governor and told him, I need a building. I need a building. He's like, who is going to staff the building? And I said, don't worry about that. We have good people that will do that. Get me a building. All right. So the police department here is fighting for you guys. So please don't vilify us. Okay? Please don't. Okay? I got another call from the governor's office and had another meeting and we had Bill and them begging for a building. Just give me something and we will staff it. We will build it. We'll make it. We want roofs over these people's heads. We do not want them in the woods. But we have to deal with the behavior in the woods right now, and it's just growing, which is why we're here.
The, the situation, just to follow up on that and into your comments, for, you know, first of all, the first response was not to move people. As, as the chief just mentioned, the folks have been there for a while. But there is a critical mass, you know, we, so I, I say a lot of things and I hope they don't come off the wrong way, but in Vermont, the way the, the systems are set up is the state government is really the key agency that's responsible for human services. They provide the funding to all the various agencies. It's really their responsibility. We, you know, pave roads and answer fire calls and, and try to keep peace and do these things. Given the resources, it has fallen to local governments to sort of become the human services providers. We're sending police officers because we don't have anybody else to do it. We have a shared social worker. That's it. So it's not the police are trying to run off people. It's the only folks we have to go out and interact when something comes and to call for resources. There's not a community in central Vermont or in the state that I'm aware of that has an area that is designated that is allowed for camping. The state of Vermont does not allow encampments on their own property. These are the, that's the, the agency that is in charge of providing these services. Uh, and I'm not trying to pass the blame, but we're in a situation where once something becomes too large, you know, Steve talked about earlier, managing circumstances and certainly some kind of housing options pods or something would be a great solution if we could find someone to do. We've been reaching out to all these agencies, saying who could help run this. Once it becomes too large, there are conflicts. We've seen them down on our bike path. We've seen them in other places. Because everyone's homeless for a different reason. And there's no one cause. So you have, have different circumstances. We don't have the wherewithal to manage that. And so we get concerned for public safety, including the safety of, and I, and I acknowledge that being out there in general is dangerous. But that being having too large a congregation of folks without the support and, and, you know, Good Sam has been amazing, their support. We talked to Rick and Julie and, you know, they were clear. There's becomes a size beyond which they can handle. And we mentioned that to the state, please give these agencies more resources. They're the ones that fund, it's not us to provide these services. So it, it's a horrible situation. Nobody likes it. And um, like I said, that's what, you know, we are not looking, the, the police won't be up there dragging people out of there. We're trying to keep a peaceful situation. We're trying to keep safety for them and for others. All it's going to take is some negative interaction that goes wrong. Uh, whether, whether the, the unhoused person is the victim of it or a, a person walking their dog. And we're going to have ten times the amount of people in this room. Uh, so we're trying to prevent those things from happening and still um, and still help in a way that we can that is really honestly beyond our capacity.
But the interim solution to building housing can't beat to scatter and displace people. That like, you just said that if people don't go to somewhere else, you're going to serve them with a no trespass.
So, so may I ask you a question? I don't, I, this is not meant to be argumentative. What, what would you recommend is the interim solution?
I think that the interim should, solution should at the very least be allow people to stay where they are and figure out what resources are needed in order to help deescalate conflicts and in order to help people even until October first, when the shelter opens its, its doors, to find something that will, to find different communicative solutions to make that at all, at, at all sustainable for a month. It, we can't ask people to pick up and leave every time more than twenty people don't have a home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello all. My name is Azula. My pronouns are she/her. Coming here today to express my frustration with the way that the encampment eviction is being handled. And yes, I'm saying the word eviction because when this was brought up, um, y'all said you're not forcefully moving anybody, said it's not an eviction. The looming threat of a no trespass order to several people who already have precarious legal situations of just a wide spectrum, that is definitely a threat. That is definitely pretty forceful. These folks have nowhere to go. They don't want to leave. Frankly, a lot of the issues that um, city council is trying to address by, you know, evicting these folks could be resolved by these folks just talking it out. I've visited the encampment multiple times and when trouble happens, people that are causing trouble are asked to leave. Also, yeah, um, it's, it's been repeatedly stated by a lot of folks living there and people that are paying attention to the situation that yes, a caseworker working with the Montpelier Police Department did bring folks to the encampment that were known to cause conflicts. And now everybody's being asked to move. That feels more like folks just being pushed around from site to site. These folks want to just like have a steady place to stay, get their lives back together, get on their feet, find housing. This isn't the solution. Yeah, I'm just, this is extremely shameful, everyone involved. I want to thank the folks at Good Sam for trying their hardest to actually help out, deliver tents, deliver supplies, try and work with folks on conflicts. I don't know. This is just, uh, this is deeply shameful. Also with the hunger strike going on and the fact that Derek was arrested on Monday, right after interviewing with the VT Digger about the situation. I don't know about y'all, but that feels a little bit fishy to me. Um, if you're going to arrest somebody immediately after they've interviewed about the way in which they're being mistreated by police and by the city government. I want to let folks know that a public records request was made last night for all emails, all correspondence involving the encampment at two oh three, uh, Country Club Road. And that all the uh, PDFs of, you know, all the emails and everything that is available on vt leaks dot org. So if anybody is questioning, you know, how this was handled internally, they can go there. It's under the documents section at the very bottom, as is the arrest footage. Um, so yeah, I just want to say, uh, this was discussed in an extremely dishonest way by all of y'all. I'm deeply ashamed. Uh, this is picking up a lot of traction on social media in town. People are coming by the hunger strike spot to express support. This is an unpopular decision and y'all should really consider changing it because public pressure will not go down.
Thank you. Just, just a couple of comments about that, just about the relocation of people. I want to be clear. I, I don't know, this is all news to me about us relocating folks there, so I'll follow up with that, but um, when people are on private property and they ask us to remove people that they are trespassing, and this is, you know, obviously public property, it's a, and that's why we're having this conversation. So again, we don't go looking for people on private property, but when the owner of the private property calls and says, somebody is on my property any more than any, someone was on someone's front yard, then we will go and, and move them. It's not because we're looking to do so. Um, so I just want to make that distinction between the relocation and um, you know, I, with regard to the arrest, the gentleman had outstanding warrants and had failed to appear in court and that including an assault charge. Um, and he made himself known and when we pointed to see who it was we were talking with, then we found it. And our police have a duty to arrest people with outstanding warrants. That's what they're told to do by the courts. So it was terrible timing and looks bad. Um, but that's the case. We would have done that for any outstanding warrant that we found at the time we found it. Thanks, Bill.
All right, um, I just, I just have a few points to make.
Could you, could you tell us your name, please?
My name is Derek Marlborough. Uh, one, um, I have nothing but respect for our authority. Um, yes, it was horrible timing with the arrest, but even when they came to get me, I, there was no resistance. I cooperated, you know, I, I have great respect for our nation's authorities everywhere. Um, I come from a military family. I served in the U, the United States Army National Guard of Camp Borghart, Louisiana, seven hundred seventy third battalion, doing water rescue from twenty thirteen to the end of twenty fifteen. I'm one of the campers up there and I've uh, been on this hunger strike. Um, you know, just as a way for me to vent, you know, do something for myself. I come from a, I'm from Louisiana. Growing up there, we had to fight every single day. I am trying to unlearn a bunch of behaviors because I realized that I don't have to fight anymore. I have a community that will look out for me. And the hunger strike was a way for me to assert my rights without um, letting myself fall victim to my own temper. Um, it gave me some time to just do my own thing. Um, and, and have, and see my community come together. It helped me feel a lot better, alleviated a bunch of my anger about this. Secondly, um, I feel like we're begin, we're given, we're be, we're being given an ultimatum. And that's no different than forcing someone to do something. Thirdly, if there's any way that I could help at the site, I am more than willing to go around each and every day and pick up all the trash I see, you know, um, and maintain general maintenance, maintenance of the site. I even volunteer in the community garden with my friend Calais from time to time. Um, so um, I don't just utilize that place to live in. I also take part in the community there actively. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a real, it's just really sad that uh, we have people there that are trying to make something of their lives. And it's really hard to do that when we keep getting grouped in with the same criminalistic behaviors happening with some of our unhoused community members. Also, one more thing, um, I've spoken with everyone at camp and it, I think everyone's made up their mind that they're not going to move. So um, to avoid conflict, I, I've, I've, what I've been hearing is that people just want to stay at their site just until October. Then everybody will pack up and, you know, you'll never hear about it again. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Hi, my name is Valerie. I'm, I was unhoused, but I was homeless in Montpelier. Um, and it's always so frustrating when there's a natural disaster, something happens in Vermont and we hear Vermont strong and neighbors helping neighbors. And it seems like it's only for the privileged. It's only for people who lost their material goods, their houses and came from some other source. And we have GoFundMes uh, people with money, giving people with money things. And then we have all this influx of people who are losing their housing because they can't afford their rent. Because you know how much rent costs now? I don't know if you know. I don't know if you all own houses that you bought forever ago, but people can't afford their rent anymore. They're not making enough money. And this influx of homelessness isn't going anywhere. It's not going anywhere. And, you know, you might talk about people who aren't from this community coming to this community. That's because there are more people getting displaced from their own communities. These are, these are not just um, homeless people. These are citizens. These are citizens in Montpelier. These are our neighbors. These are our children who have been experiencing homelessness, who are living homeless, who are going to school homeless. And we're shoving them into the woods or not allowing them into the woods. We're turning our heads because they live in the woods. And I, I don't know if I misinterpreted what you said, but you, it sounded like you said, our hands are tied as a city. If we have to go to the state to get some kind of funding or help, that those people deal with that, not the city, we deal with roads? Is that what you said?
What I said was that the way the government is set up, that human services is the primary responsibility of the state, that we don't have built in sort of know-how and capacity. We are trying to address the situation. But the, the Department of Human Services at the state and their funding and their expertise is really the people that would be leading this effort. And frankly, we feel like they've let us down as well and we're trying to figure it out on our own.
So pragmatically, what is the city doing? Pragmatically to get people housed? Because I can tell you, when I was homeless, nothing is networked. Nothing is networked. Do people know they need to go like get a general delivery mailbox so that they can get their paperwork? Do they can, are people helping them get identification? Are people helping disabled people with paperwork? They're not. Nobody's doing that. Nobody's helping network these services. Nobody's helping. There's nothing pragmatic happening. Well, the city needs to do something about that. We need to recognize what pragmatically is wrong and be, start addressing it like a year ago, two years ago, but this problem is not going away. This isn't just about this one incident.
Appreciate that. So I just, I mentioned that about a month ago, in this very room, we had about a two hour discussion with all of our service providers about this very issues before this incident came up, but about the exact same needs. And we have actually done, and I may let the chief out, uh, you know, we've reached out to partner with organizations with the know-how to do direct outreach to try to connect people with the various services that you're talking about, including Washington County Mall Health, Good Sam, and a few others, including adding our own social worker. You know, we, it's, it's far from perfect, but we have added, it's probably is different from a few years back. And um, we are taking this on because nobody else is and we are, we are ambiturs at it.
Is there someone on the city council who's connected to that and trying to get the state to get on that, to get funding for this? Because this is a crisis. This is immediate crisis.
So Valerie, maybe I can answer some of your questions because I saw the same problems that you saw. And I agree with you, the police are not the answer for this. And I said, we were spoke in the wheel and I will continue to say we're, we're spoke in the wheel. But we needed more resources and they needed to connect. And what we did was we brought all those service providers together to see what services they were providing to make sure we weren't duplicating those. And the great part of it was, once I got it set up, they allowed me to get out because they didn't need the police in there. We needed the, the service providers.
You need us too.
They have, they have the outreach workers who are fierce. So they have those participating in those conversations. So that they had all those and they, they came up with the plan and we've been doing outreach every single day. And what the common theme has been is that, that people don't really want the help. And that's
You need their input, you need their input on what, on what's happening.
Yeah, that's for the group. Just keep in mind, I'm trying to, so you're asking who's linking these resources? I'm doing the best I can to link the resources in the position that I am. And I'm kind of pushy and I interrupted the governor and I'm asking for things and we got support from our city leaders. But we're being told no too. So it's really tricky for us. And we are, you know, if you listen to the city manager, we don't have the infrastructure, the setup, the personnel, the staff to handle this. I am being completely overrun and I've told everybody here, I need help. I need help. Right? And I, I'll be the first to admit, we are not equipped to deal with this by ourselves. And that's why I've keep, continued to reach out for help. Our calls are over nine hundred year to date, more than the year before. And I'm doing over three less calls. I'm burning up the cops. I'm afraid I'm going to lose some of them because it's what we deal with. And what happens when we lose them? More cops are going to have to deal with the same number. And then I'm going to burn them out. They're going to go. And we were already down to eleven at one point. I have to, I have to, like, I have to handle this.
And we had the same experience with our, you know, fire and ambulance people too, getting tons of calls to medical emergencies. Even our DPW has been called to clean up encampments and these, these are all things that, you know, they typically don't do. We are trying to do what we can do within the abilities that we have and we are, we are in in charged waters. We do need a support org- We do need a support organization and thus far, I, you know, I'm happy to hear that there's been conversations uh, happening, but the, the folks we've spoken, spoken with have not indicated that they have the capacity to take this on, to manage a site with a lot of people. I wish they did.
Okay, thanks Valerie.
Hey, I'm Sophie Haskins. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, we know this problem isn't new. I, I grew up in St. Johnsbury and it was all going on there then. So, you know, there's not enough places for people to live. There's not things that are appropriate for people to live in. And I know that you all ran for your offices knowing that. You all, you know, it's not like you didn't think this was going to be a problem. And so I just want to know if you think that we should be believing that you'll have, you know, you'll be building housing for people. You know, I, I know that you have asserted that, you know, the state has a lot of responsibility in that way, but, you know, you're not the state and I don't expect you to answer for them. Answering for all of you, I, I want to know if, if you think that we should expect that you will be delivering housing for people to live in.
Well, I can answer that. The answer is yes. We, uh, one of the main selling points for, uh, for the city to buy that property at Country Club Road was that it would enable us to, uh, to create new housing there and we have, uh, been in the process of moving to the point where we can work with developers to put three or four hundred units of new housing on that property. And it takes time. We have, uh, filed our, uh, application to amend our growth center designation so that, uh, which is the first step in the process, which you will, will then enable us to uh, apply for, uh, tax increment financing designation so we can start to mobilize the funds that, uh, we need to put into infrastructure, roads, water lines, sewer lines, that kind of thing, so that we can put housing there. So yes, it's, and it's not going to happen overnight, but we have spent a tremendous amount of time at this council over the last couple of years. We've had, uh, public, uh, public meetings that we've up at, uh, up at the clubhouse and, and throughout the city. And we've had hundreds of, uh, residents come to these meetings to, uh, talk about what they're interested in seeing there. So yeah, so we're, we're working on it and, uh,
I, I think respectfully, I, you know, I hope that that all works out. That's, you know, that's why I voted for it to pass and I, and I think it would be great. But we knew that this is a problem now too, and we know that our solutions have to include now. We can't just say in three years, maybe it'll be better. Because of the toll that that will take on everyone is, is not spendable. And if you, I, again, I think that you know, coming in that there's a problem that needs an addressing now and it needs an addressing in three years. The three years will be better. The five years will be even better, hopefully. I would like to believe that. But if we're not seeing sufficient action now, I want you to think about why is it that we should believe you?
Well, the action that you've seen now includes the, uh, the Welcome Center on the Barry Montpelier Road that, uh, city funds went into, to, uh, to open that up. It involves contracting with, uh, with Samaritan Haven to operate the shelter at, uh, Country Club Road. It involves, uh, working with, uh, and, and getting more money from state government to, to expand that in this year. So that, that is happening. Uh, is, is it enough? It isn't enough. And that's one of the real, uh, real problems, which is that the city of Montpelier does not now and is not going to have the resources to end homelessness in the city of Montpelier. If we just look at the resources that the city of Montpelier has and the ability, our capacity to uh, raise taxes on our residents to, uh, no matter what we do, that is not enough in its own, on its own to, uh, to eliminate how homelessness in Montpelier. And so that's why the city manager keeps talking about, and chief keeps talking about, well, we need to, we have been and we will continue to push state government to mobilize more, uh, resources to us because, uh, just, you, they're not letting people, uh, camp out on their property either. And, and the, the state owns a lot of, uh, real estate in Montpelier, some of which could potentially be used for housing or shelter space.
Just one more thing to that too, because I think that's a fair question. Uh, first of all, housing doesn't happen overnight regardless of how fast and, and, you know, we, the city will not be building housing. We're not.
So we shouldn't believe that you all will be responsible for making sure.
No, I didn't say that. I said, we don't, we're not builders. We would arrange for people to do that. But what I was going to say is that you should realize that, um, the housing that's at uh, the transit center now was a city project that we put together. That was forty units of housing. The housing above Obisshones, uh, was a downstreet project that we put funds in and helped partner and make happen. So we have taken actions already to create housing in the city and are continuing to do so. Buying a three million dollar piece of property to create housing was a pretty aggressive move actually, and it does take some time. To your point, you know, we were talking with the governor's office yesterday and actually I wish you'd been on the call because you're saying exactly what we were saying because they were, you know, talking about the need for more permanent housing and we said, we can't agree with you more. Can you provide us funding to get it started? Well, you know, not, you know, maybe we could put it in next year's thing. And then we said, what do we do with the folks that are in tents right now? We've got a problem now. Where are you, you know, we mentioned a couple of buildings that they own. And said, why don't, you know, they'll, they're going to get back to us. So I, I appreciate, I mean, we're very.
You all have a moral responsibility to handle this now. And I think you, like, you continue to stay in these positions because you believe that you're doing, you know, for the greater good. And I think you need to know that we know that you're not.
Appreciate that. Where would, where would you have us build housing and how fast would you, and how would you do it?
I think, you know, the country club space is a great spot. I think that the college green, I think that the, the problem here is that, you know, I think that the moral responsibility involves things that are very against the way that we have believed is okay to do business. We should be confiscating land. We should be, you know, we should be, the town, the city is us. We should be building houses. It shouldn't be making people rich, building them. You know, this is one of the big things of how do we support projects that aren't just about making, you know, Stone and Browning more money? I, you know, it's the, the moral things here. I understand that you're constrained by the legal system that you're in and you're choosing to participate in it.
Thanks.
Is it okay if I ask this question real quick?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have said, um, that like they're not allowed to be there at the moment, like at the, at the, um, campsite. My question is, where are they going to go? Where, where would they go that they are allowed to be in? Because, because I can answer that for you. It's nowhere because you're never going to let them stay in one spot to get their stuff together enough to be able to, buy a house, get a job, because I'll let you know one thing. You can't get a job without a house easily and you can't get a house without a job. Um, which, that's a paradox and, and that's a not okay paradox. Um, but that is the system we live in and it's a problem. So my question is, where are they going to go? Uh, because they can't go into Hubbard Park. They can't go, go into the, um, the park above or below National Life. They can't camp, camp out on the state house. They can't camp on the streets. They can't camp, um, on the bike path. Where are they going to go? Because the overflow shelter only takes so many people. And also it is, I, I, from what I've heard, it's not the best solution, especially with the number of homeless people in this town. Um, and it is not the safest solution for some of those people. I need to know where they are going to go. Because if you were going to displace someone and tell them they can't sleep anywhere, where are they going to sleep? Where are they going to live?
Thank you.
Sorry, just want to pause in case there's a answer to that question or if that was.
Oh, well, I mean, I think it's a fair question and a difficult one. We do, you know, we have an encampment policy that describes circumstances under which camping will be tolerated. And there are places, uh, in the city where people are camping that they are not being moved. There are places in the woods in Hubbard Park where people are that have been for extended periods of time.
I don't think it's difficult at all, actually. I have several ideas, but again, I'm only sixteen.
Okay, thank you. Sir.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Clementine Noon. I hate public speaking, so I'm going to like shake it out a little bit. But I, you know, this was the first, I've lived in Montpelier for almost three years and I've been really disappointed with some of the trends in Montpelier for almost three years, but, uh, this was the first time I've shown up and doing uncomfortable public speaking. So, um, I, I hope that in conjunction with everyone who showed up today, um, is, uh, uh, saying something. And I just want to start with like my personal feelings of like disappointment, like watching this, uh, series of events develop, like we all have kind of acknowledged as much, but, um, I just wanted to add like on Friday was when I read the VT Digger article about this situation at the Country Club. And it was the same time that I saw another headline for, um, President Biden doing a, uh, emergency declaration for the, uh, tropical storm Debbie that was coming into Vermont. And it was at the same time that I was reading the updates from the city about the, uh, forecasts for our flood gauges and the rain and, uh, the same time as I was concerned about living in a flood plain and, um, all the kind of, you know, fears and trauma that had come up, not just from our experience of flooding last year, but also one month earlier, uh, seeing our neighbors in Plainfield and such. It was such devastation. So right as I was starting to get concerned about, you know, my own situation and watching the flood, the forecasts and seeing Biden do this emergency declaration was when, um, I just felt horrible that my neighbors over at the Country Club were being dispersed. And these two things were happening at the same time and it just felt incredibly wrong and it definitely looked very bad. And I guess I just want to say, I, I don't know, I, I want to pause for like sympathy, especially with like the frustrations with wishing that you had more resources from the, the state. This sympathy of, um, you know, I, I really know really the great work that Good Sam and, uh, Downstreet does. And we're, we're working on these problem, problems in the long term. I think the Welcome Center is awesome. Like, I, I know that we're, we're all trying to do this, but at the same time, um, you can't, you know, meet that, those frustrations or those difficulties with just arbitrary solutions. And I, I feel like one of the main problems that's been discussed has been the kind of magnet of people getting together and then problems happening and then we need to disperse them. And, uh, the ideal solution from the city's perspective has to come from their policy. It can't just be, oh, it would be really convenient for us if everyone was paired off in, uh, groups of two or three dispersed everywhere throughout the woods, then we wouldn't have to worry about them. So I'll just end really quickly with, I, I think we've touched on some demands, some things that could change within that policy. That policy was written to be very, uh, sympathetic and very empathetic in my opinion, but one of the, uh, criteria there in the compliance section is that anyone who's asked to move needs to be offered shelter or referral to shelter. And that is impossible. That policy cannot, uh, be complied with at all. So there's cause to update it, to reflect that impossibility of referral for shelter or offering of shelter. There's cause to update that policy to include guarantees for protections from those, uh, trespassing charges or, or whatever could criminalize folks who are homeless. I know that, uh, it is mentioned in the policy, but it could be protected.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I should, I should point out that, that we're not we're, we're not arresting or prosecuting people for, uh, not having a place to live. And, and someone asked me the other day if, uh, if this is all because of that Supreme Court decision that says that people can be arrested for, uh, for being homeless and sleeping outside. And the answer is absolutely not. You know, that's not e- everything that, every action that's been taken has been direct based on, uh, difficult, troubling, troublesome conduct rather than the fact that people are, uh, are living outside. Is there anyone, I want to get back to the council. I want to give other people who've not, uh, had a chance to speak, but would like to speak either in the room or online to, uh, to speak and then I'll, uh, bring it back to the, uh, members of the council. Bill, have you thought, any thoughts that you want to get back? Okay, members of the council. Steve, you have spoken. Um, okay.
Ask somebody to take Kurt down so we can see the other faces that are there.
Okay, thanks. All right, I, I was going to, I'll start out. I was going to say some of what I already said is what, uh, what I was going to say in summary, which is that we, the city for years has worked on, uh, developing resources. We will continue to develop resources. Uh, we, we are devoting, uh, state or city funds to things like providing services to people who are, uh, who are unhoused and providing services to, providing like clinician to the, uh, police department because we know that this is not a law enforcement problem. And I know that, uh, talking to the chief, he's not interested in treating this as a law enforcement problem. This is not, you can't arrest yourself out of a homelessness, homelessness crisis, but, uh, we can definitely provide the resources within our capacity to, uh, to help direct services to people. We do have, uh, the city itself is not a network of, uh, service providers, but we have, uh, worked with service providers to make sure that network, including, uh, our social worker that we shared, we shared with Barry, uh, the Good Samaritan Haven, Washington County Mental Health and other entities are there to, uh, to provide services and, and links to, uh, to people who need the services. And I know they're going to continue to do that. I see, uh, see Julie's on the, uh, or Julie Bond is on the call. Um, now other people, you know, Rick DeAngelis has been to meetings many times, uh, talking about what, uh, what they've been doing for for our, our neighbors and, and, and we're going to continue to do that. There is no no instantaneous solution to this and we, uh, we definitely, uh, I, I take the, uh, the point the last speaker made that, uh, maybe we should reexamine the, uh, our policy as, uh, as a constructive solution and, and, and we can do that. We can ask the city manager and, uh, leadership to do that, to see if there's any, uh, any amendments or improvements that could be made. But we don't, we don't have the answer tonight and we're not going to fix everything, uh, in, in one meeting. And I'm happy to hear more, uh, Adrian.
Hi, my name is Adrian Gill. Thank you all for being here tonight and being very brave and standing up and sharing your thoughts and um, ideas. I've, you know, I'm not an expert in homelessness. I've, I've been impacted by it by people that I know and that I have supported, um, in that area, um, currently. And it is really, really difficult. It is a complex issue that the world is trying to solve. And I think the city has a role in this. And we're not going to solve it through the city. And we're not going to solve it through the city of Montpelier. But I think what we could do, you know, is just continue to enhance our partnerships. It's going to come through partnerships and working with the state and Good Sam and everything that we're currently doing. And we do have two committees in the city. We have our housing committee and we have a homelessness committee. And so I would love to explore really charging those two committees to, I mean, I know this is what they, what they do. I know the home, the housing committee is looking at housing opportunities. They're, they're exploring all different types of housing. And the homelessness committee is, is, is led by Good Sam. And, and this is what they deal with every day. I would love to see those two committees come together to forge a, even a temporary partnership, because they're working on similar topics, but they're not talking. And so really having that opportunity to come together with those two city committees and explore, you know, there are best practices that have been, you know, tried in Vermont. We can learn from those lessons, you know, we can look at Burlington, you talked about, you know, reaching out to organizations with pods, you know, there's not the capacity, no one wants to manage those. But maybe we charge those two committees to do some research and find out what has worked, what hasn't worked in the cities of Vermont and across the country. Figure out the cost. Joe Biden, our president, just set aside money through the HUD Foundation of federal funds to reduce the Red Deep, to accelerate these, these projects for housing, because it is a national crisis. And so how can we, you know, capitalize on those funds? How can we bring them to Vermont? We have a grant writing committee that would love to write some grants. So let's utilize the resources that we currently have and be very, very focused and very targeted on some solutions that will work for our community. I've heard that the shelters, you know, are, are a part of this complex puzzle, but people want more. They want a place to, to live and not, you know, there's permanent housing, there's temporary housing. But, you know, being in a shelter with cots, you know, across the room is not for everybody, especially post pandemic. It's not, you know, a safe place for, for, for health reasons. And so looking at multi-tiered solutions from a shelter to pod solutions to, you know, wrap around services that we're trying to provide with our, our, you know, crisis center, our social services, working with the state and Washington County, and then transitioning folks to permanent housing, which we're also trying to do. So it's a multi-layered process. It's a multi-step process. But I'm hearing that we want housing now. The city owns land. So is that an opportunity to provide, you know, temporary, you know, more temporary housing until we find those developers to build houses? So that's not going to be built on for another one to two years. So what can we do in the interim to provide our folks with secure housing? Those are some thoughts that I'm trying to sort of, you know, work through.
Thanks, Adrian. Lauren.
Yeah, thanks. And just, just echo really grateful for people coming in, sharing your perspectives, really important and impactful. I, yeah, I, I like Adrian's idea of trying to, you know, there's a whole bunch of solutions we need to be looking at, and we need to deal with the immediate crisis in front of us and know that a bunch more people are going to become unhoused shortly as more people are kicked out of the motel program. And so, you know, as everybody has said, it's, it's not going anywhere and it's not getting better. It's going to get worse in the short term. We know this. So what are we doing? I mean, if we put together, you know, like a really short charge of like, you know, come back in one month with some tangible solutions. Part of it could be looking at our policy. I definitely want to make sure we're not criminalizing homelessness. I think that's what our policy says, but let's make sure that there's nothing that we're doing that is pulling people into the criminal justice system just because they're unhoused. And I, I know that was our goal, writing it. So hopefully, like, we can make sure and just make, you know, just, it was written a few years ago. So it probably should just be, you know, reviewed and updated. One recommendation, if we're going to do this committee, like, I want a state person there. They have money. They, you know, there was somebody who came to a meeting a couple of weeks ago, one of our city council meetings, and said, there's state grants. It sounded like there's a bunch of kind of criteria that you have to meet, you know, in order to get it. Let's make sure somebody is at the table. So as we're trying to come up with solutions, we know that it's the kind of solution the state will actually fund. We can get money, we can get resources and, you know, hopefully they would commit to that. I mean, maybe we could get state funds to train people who are currently unhoused and unemployed to work at these facilities. This is what we keep hearing is a huge issue is there's just nobody to work. There's people who don't have jobs right now, like, can we, so maybe there's ways that we can try to get some resources to to bring to bear to, yeah, from the state, you know, in partnership with Good Sam. And, you know, let's, let's get more creative. I mean, yeah, I don't think any, well, speaking for myself, I certainly, you know, I want to be looking for solutions. People need somewhere to be able to be secure, just live their lives without, you know, feeling threatened that they might get moved at any time if they're not doing anything. You know, hopefully we can be focusing on if there's people that are behaving in ways that are becoming problematic, that we're dealing with that and not, you know, doing a broad brush approach, you know? And I know our police department takes a very empathetic approach. And, you know, just underscore that I know that that's what we want to continue doing.
Thanks, Lauren. Anybody else? Okay. Yes, one more comment. You get the last word.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm T. Graham. I have still registered voter in Montpelier. I have lived in a tent in New Hampshire and I'm currently in low income housing. And I think just kind of replying to something that the chief was saying about some folks not wanting help, I, I just, I want to kind of remind everybody to approach that issue with a certain amount of grace. Because as we said, this is a national thing, right? People are being displaced all the time, mostly by police or, you know, militia in, in a lot of red states. And even when they are put into shelter systems in a lot of places around the country. I mean, somebody mentioned coming from Louisiana. I know a, a lot of the, I know some folks who dealt with this stuff in LA County, where there are sheriffs who are literally in criminal gangs. And, and when you have folks who have dealt with services that, that take that form of violence and abuse and, and sexual abuse in some cases. There, there are places where the things that, that come packaged as help and are talked about in the same kind of language. I'm not accusing you folks of this, but people are coming from places where they have an enormous amount of trauma and severe PTSD from having dealt with help. And so there's a reason that some folks are refusing help. And, and so we just want to make sure we're not villainizing and criminalizing that and approach those folks with grace because they, they have good reasons to be distrustful. And so sometimes, you know, even with the best of intentions, what, what, what some folks in this, in these situations are hoping for most of all is just to be left alone. And that is, that's a cheap solution. Doesn't cost you a nickel. And, and yeah, for, for some of these folks, that's just what they want more than anything is just to not have anybody bother them because, because they've been so badly bothered, mostly by city employees all over the country, and they're, they're sick of it. And that's why I think a lot of folks don't want to move from where they are because they, every, they just keep getting moved and, and there's so much trauma around it. And it's like, finally, maybe, finally, I have a place where I can just not have that happen again. And then now it's being maybe taken away by, as a result of apparently, you know, it, I don't think, I'm not saying that, that folks being moved from national life to here and then causing problems, that was deliberate. But you can maybe understand how someone dealing with paranoia and loss of sleep and all this trauma might suspect that it's deliberate. And so it feels, it feels violent, even when you're trying to, to help them in this situation. And so, you know, as much, as much grace for that kind of trauma that people have is, I think, very recommended. Thanks.
Thanks. So when I see that we know, have a couple more people online, Julie.
Hey there, Julie Bond from Good Samaritan Haven. I wasn't sure about the queue there because it's hard to see it on the web here, so apologies. But thanks for everybody's comments. You know, this is truly, as many folks have said, it's a, it is a larger problem. This is a, a, not our community alone, you know, it's national systemic. It is, it is huge. And so, you know, as a result, Good Sam has tried to grow tremendously to, to respond to that, to that issue, to the needs. We continue to do that every day. You know, we're, we're trying creative solutions, many ideas, you know, on a daily basis. And then includes, includes trying to get some creative solutions to increasing shelter capacity, improving different models of the provision of care and so on. And, you know, the city's responding in a great many ways, as Bill and Jack described. You know, we've worked for many years together on this. We continue to partner. It continues to be a challenge. It's because it is so, so, so complex. I cannot underscore the complexity of, of this situation, just as a gentleman previously described. There, there are many reasons for that, right? From, from those experiencing homelessness to those providing care and, and attempting to provide solution and emergency housing, for, for example. You know, but folks responding to the crisis are tired. You know, there's, there is compassion fatigue out there, you know? There's been a lot of effort put forth tirelessly every day, you know, our teams, the city's teams, so many community partners around, around our community, the state, the country, and so on. So there is that too, you know, so let's put that in, in the mix, you know? But among all the complexities, we need to all remain partners, you know, public service providers, the city, and direct our energy to the institutions, to the systems of power and with resource, you know, to make change that's broader, you know, from state levels, federal levels and so on. But, you know, change in terms of new housing, change in terms of new initiatives, enabling new shelters to start. It takes time. That is a timeline, right? That has a longer period of time than, than we all know needs to happen right now. I, I understand some folks are saying we need it immediately. Yes, we do, absolutely. But we're not giving up on those things either, right? We're not giving up on the parallel paths, the short-term ones, immediate, the mid and the long-term ones. Because housing takes time, shelters, putting them up takes a lot of time as well. You know, so that I, I do invite folks to, to, if, you know, we're all here because we care about the same thing. You know, we may be saying it in different ways or, or coming from different organizations and entities that are have different scopes of work, right? But we're here because we care and we believe in this, and we believe that we need solutions. So I do invite people to come and, and join in the effort. It's complex work. It's amazing work. It's hard work. But come, join us in our efforts to provide the solutions and, and be service providers. We welcome you, you know? So thank you.
Thanks, Julian. Thanks for everything you've been doing.
Thanks.
Meredith.
Hi, thanks. I'm going to leave my video off because I have a unstable connection. My name is Meredith Warner. I am the interim co-chair of the Homelessness Task Force and I'm also a staff person at Good Samaritan Haven. So I just wanted to name that I'm here. I appreciate really especially what Adrian was saying, the notion of the, of the council coming to the task force with a specific, specific charge around this issue. I also love the idea of the task force collaborating with housing, the housing committee to think about potential solutions in the future and how we can work together. You know, the, it's an important moment at the task force. There's been a lot of turnover in terms of who's on the task force. And this September 4th, on Wednesday, the task force is meeting to really set our priorities for the coming year. So we're at this really opportune moment, I think, for the task force to support the needs of the city and provide some research capacity and some energy around what's possible. So I just invite you to, the council, to bring that work to the task force. And, and I appreciate everybody who's out here tonight speaking and really holding space for the folks who are sleeping outside tonight. So thank you.
Thanks, Meredith. And Christina.
Hi, thank you. I was having trouble, trouble raising my hand. So thank you for taking my comment. I do want to thank everyone for speaking and being here and listening. And I really want to thank Good Samaritan, Another Way. I live right near Another Way and they are amazing. And the staff, the, the people who interact with those services. I bring my dog up to the golf course. We enjoy going up there. It's a beautiful space. And we have, I've had great interactions with the folks camping up there. Obviously, it's not ideal that we have to have people living in spaces that isn't meant to be lived in in that way. But obviously, it's amazing to see the community come together there, and I really don't want to break up that community if we don't have to. I really appreciate folks providing solutions and hearing people out. And I want to say, you know, I, I, we need those immediate solutions, as folks have said many times, so I won't hammer that point again. So looking into where we can place people right now before October would really, I think, be, should be priority number one. And I also could see and hear a common theme among our discussion here where folks who are directly or indirectly involved, there are not enough supports, whether it's financial, staff, people, local, just community support for this work. And I think that at the end of the day, we were all hitting on the point, or many were, that the governor's office is a, the perfect place to bring your concerns and push for this. I think this forum is great, like I said, and people should continue to speak up here to these, to this city council. And, but the governor's office and the administration really should be held accountable. We knew that this, this housing was going to get worse. We know that funding has been put in for housing, like folks said, it does not happen overnight. And nor should it. It should be built properly and safe for people. But the governor's office really should be held accountable for not funding these services properly, whether it's our local police department, the staff at these organizations, you know, social services, whatever it may be. It takes a whole system to, to support our community. And I think people who spoke here tonight and others should really take their concerns straight to the governor's office, whether it's calling, emailing. We are in an election year, and I think that if enough people reach out, they will hear and they will hopefully respond and by supporting everyone, including the folks here. So I know that's not in the immediate, but yet it, it does work and it could work. And I think it's great that the people who work on it directly speak up to the governor. I really appreciated hearing that. But we really need everyday people to also be reaching out because they do listen. And if enough people reach out, things can change. So I just wanted to share that because that was a very common theme here. And I would like to just kind of call out the governor's office for the lack of leadership for this issue.
Thanks, Christina. Okay, I think that wraps up this discussion. I appreciate everyone who, who participated. And thanks for coming. This is not the last word that we'll have on this, and so we'll keep going. Thanks, everybody. Next up, city council reports. Starting on this end, Adrian.
Um, so I will just encourage everyone to attend the World Soccer Festival on Saturday. It's at the high school. It's bringing in folks from around central Vermont to celebrate soccer, which is a good, fun, recreation activity for everyone. There'll be tournaments and just a fun way to get out and celebrate Montpelier and, and be a part of the recreation environment.
What's the weather supposed to be like this weekend?
What?
What's the weather supposed to be like?
I don't know, probably rain.
Well, let's just see. I'm checking.
My pessimistic side.
Yeah, that's kind of what it looks like. Carrie. Tim?
Conversations. The housing committee has had a couple really good sessions, good meetings. Most recently, Tess Taylor from Berry City, Jesse Baker from South Burlington, Jasmine Hurley from Winuski, and today Chip Sawyer from St. Albans, all did Zoom meetings with members of the housing committee to talk about things that they've been successful doing to create housing in their communities. So hopefully we can pull some good ideas from them and maybe they, they would help at least fleshing out ideas. They're very exciting calls. It was good.
Yeah. Uh, Palin?
No report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lauren.
Just wanted to thank everyone who voted yesterday. Thanks to everyone who volunteered and the city clerk's office. Another successful election. Go democracy. Thanks for participating, everyone who did.
Okay. Not much to say. I, I was, Adrian and I were also at that housing committee meeting last week that Tim mentioned. And I got some ideas that I've mentioned to the city manager already and things that, ideas that I think we will be, oh, Carrie, you were there too, sorry. And that we will be And that we will be that can probably seed future conversations. So there there are ideas out there and I can also say that we, Montpelier itself got got some credit for some of the good things that we've already done in the housing area. I'll just observe that you know, tonight was tonight wouldn't have happened in the ordinary course of things, it was, we we scheduled this for 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 a very quick meeting, a special meeting to deal with a couple of items that had to be dealt with tonight and I'm glad we were able to make the time to discuss this very important and pressing issue and we'll we'll be back. City clerk.
Yeah, I wonder if you all can indulge me a little bit, I thought this was going to be, I knew this was planned as a quickie meeting, so I didn't know that the warrant warrants were going to be on it at all, so I did not bring the book and I've been looking for a chance to sneak out of here and get it, but I haven't had one, so I wonder if I might ask you all to stay a little later so you can sign it, I'll dash and get it right now, catch up with
Do you have, do you have anything else, you have any reports on the election or anything?
Reports on the election turnout was, oh, I will give that report, which is really interesting, but it was low around the around the state with the exception, I hear, of Callas. But they had an extra race going on, but yeah, so this this election didn't fire people up, but I'm sure November will and we'll make up for it and the volunteers were amazing. Once again, I don't know I don't know how I could do this in another town because without the volunteer crowd that I can always count on, it's sort of unreal. I mean, I'm having to, I'm having to turn some volunteers down and say, you know, wait, don't forget me in November when I'm really going to need the help.
You might not remember that years ago, before you were the city clerk, what we would do to run the elections was that there was there's a handful of retired people who would come out and we would pay them to sit there at the polls and do that and and that was fine, but having the the volunteers come out, I think is just great.
I remember that, that was the way it was when I started.
Yeah. And everybody pretty much universally enjoys it.
Yeah, they seem to, it's great.
All right, thanks, Kelly. City managers report.
Okay, good, no, it aren't for Phil, sir. Interestingly, I guess there's a little bit of irony that the original purpose for calling this meeting tonight was to review a development agreement to jumpstart some housing. And we weren't able to get that all together, so just one of those kind of cruel twists, I, you know, most people have left now, but just publicly, I thank everybody who spoke from the heart, this is just a brutal issue and we hate being in in these positions because no matter what decision you make is a good one, so I really appreciated hearing from everybody. And other than that, we have a regular meeting on the 28th and back to our regularly scheduled programming after that.
Okay, thank you, and with that, at 6:54 PM, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good to see you all.